Call the meeting to order, the common council of Tell City. The mayor's absent today, so I have to run the meeting out of my presidential duties. Would we all stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmen, you should have a adoption of the agenda in front of you. Anything you want to add to the agenda? Anyone have anything? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt as is.
Motion to adopt as is.
Motion by Brian, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. You should have the copy of the minutes from our last meeting. See any corrections or deletions to that? No, it'll stand proved as read. Anybody have anything? Larry?
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Larry, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mike. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Approval accounts payable vouchers, it's something new Connie added, what you've been signing, it's tell on, well, go ahead and explain it if you'd better me.
Yes, it's just the approval of all the claims that have been paid in the last month, any invoices. It's also for the utility office and the city accounts, too.
It's just, I think it's a-
We would just need approval of those claims, those invoices.
Do you have a motion to approve the payable vouchers?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Larry? I'll second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. If you're not on the agenda and you would like to speak, comments of citizens, please come to the microphone, state your name and so forth, and you can speak.
Everybody here's on the agenda.
Everybody's here on agenda. We'll move right on down to committee and ward reports. I'll start with Larry on the corner there.
Okay. On April the 9th, I attended the Park and Recreation Department, the public hearing on their five-year plan. I did speak in favor of developing a boat ramp slash marina at Sunset Park, that's something that is in the city's five-year plan, I believe. And so I spoke, I really would like to see something done with that. So I mentioned that, I spoke in favor of something being done down there. The current boat ramp that is there is just totally unsafe and inadequate, and frankly, I doubt if a new boat ramp could be built in that same area. But, so I, my personal opinion, and I think members of the Park and Rec Department agreed with this, is that we need to look for a new area, maybe farther down river there on Sunset Park. But I just wish something would be started on it, because Troy has a nice boat ramp, Cannleton has a boat ramp, Rocky Point has a boat ramp, Derby has a boat ramp out there. It's, I just would like to see something done with that. I also advocated for more of the park restrooms being year-round restrooms. My understanding currently, the only year-round weatherproof restrooms we have are at Joe Schaefer Park. And specifically, I was asking that they look at Roy Finn Park there at the soccer park. So I attended that meeting, I made those comments during their meeting. I also attended the empty bowls slash art program at Tell City Junior/Senior High School on May the 2nd, Friday night, I guess, Friday evening. It was a, it was a good event. It was nice to see what those kids have done as far as artwork. I also took a two-week vacation during, between the last council meeting and this council meeting, so I enjoyed that. I do want to announce my partner in pride for the month of May is Don and Rhonda Corley at 140 Eleventh Street. So that's my partner in pride recipient for May.
Okay.
That concludes my report.
Any questions for Larry? I'd like to see a boat ramp, too, but I guess we'd have to get the DNR involved in that.
Yeah, it involves, I just wish we would get started on something, you know? Let's make a deter, if the existing thing can no longer be used, then let's make that determination. What's the next step?
It's not a real good boat ramp.
We used to have the, I'd say the best in Indiana, or in, along the Ohio. I can't remember the guys that-
Randy Fisher.
Randy Fisher and Dick Vee.
There you go, that's it.
They had the marina there.
Yeah, it was super. We have numerous pictures of it as it was, and now, nothing.
Something to work on.
It is.
And it's good to have Larry back, too, healthy.
Wish he'd brought some of that good chocolate. Where'd you go, Denmark or?
Went to Norway, Denmark, Sweden, and Finland.
Wow, that's a good trip.
It was.
Was it a lot up the rail, or just by car?
Some by boat, some by plane, some by bus, some by train. So it was a variety of modes of transportation.
Cruising the fjords.
That's what we did, we did. And we took a scenic train ride around Ford.
Alrighty.
How do you spell Ford?
F-J-O-R-D-S.
There you go. Only a teacher, no, wouldn't mind. Mike, are you ready?
Yes, Eric, no, but I've heard positive comments from our constituents paving, paving on 13th and Winkle Reed Streets. They're glad to have, it's over on the north side. It's nice to hear something positive. And my Tell City Pride nomination or choice is Angela and Mike Hammack's business on 1110 Steuben Street. It's a main attraction.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I asked her, when did that happen? When did all that, it looks wonderful, you'll have to drive by there and see it, seven years ago. I said, "You're kidding." She said, "Well, Gary was, he primarily wanted to concentrate on homes."
Yeah.
So I'm glad he did, so I got to nominate them. That's all I've got.
Any questions for Mike? Ward three, Phillip?
Yep. Not too much. I learned that the Perry County Solid Waste in Cannleton, they're looking at possibly expanding a little bit, so you can just drive through it. This would be a nice upgrade. And then my partners in pride would be Brenda and Abel Trujillo, T-R-U-J-I-L-L-O. They're on 10th Street. I forgot their address.
Okay. He'll come to you. You pick up the sign, tell him, he'll put it in there. Anything else?
That's it.
Brian?
Ward two.
Okay, well, I attended the property tax webinar in Connie's office on the 23rd. It was pretty interesting. Yeah, I don't know how long you had to stay, Connie. I left after an hour and a half, wasn't it?
And it was about 15 more minutes, is all, so.
I had to get going, so. This was really informative. Mike Aime put that on, didn't it?
Yes, they did, yes.
Okay. And then I attended the LEPC meeting at the patio on the 28th, and I've got a copy of the minutes, if you guys ever want to see them, I'm gonna bring them every meeting if you want to look at it. My partners in pride for May is Bill and Janice Reed at 2213 Franklin, and they really take good care of their property, they always have, and well-deserved.
Anything else?
That's all I got.
Any questions for Brian? My councilman, Lawrence, I have picked the new Serenity Studios at 19th and Tell. It's where Glenn Schroger's barber shop was. And they put a lot of money in that old building and fixed it up, and they're very appreciative of that.
That's a residence, too, isn't it?
I don't know for sure.
I don't think there's a residence in it anymore. They rezoned for the business.
Nice parking.
They put a lot of money in, yeah, or, yeah. But they, Kim wasn't there, she was down to real this shop that day, but I left, I think they're appreciative of, appreciate them cleaning it up, it really looks good. So, we were supposed to have a car show here yesterday, and naturally, we got rained out, so that was canceled. As I speak, I have not heard of a makeup day. We usually don't do that, because we're one of the first, and then every weekend, somebody's got one. I think the kids' chalk thing was canceled. They moved it down to the swimming pool, but I think it got rained out, too. So, if you've got any streets in your ward that have potholes, get them to Jim Holmes. Call down there, or go down there and see him. It's probably, well, we need to do some patching. I know he's working on a couple quotes, and it's not cheap, but he got a quote on that alley by TNR and Circle S. It's, I mean, it's shot, but I think it was 30-some thousand dollars to fix that alley, 32 or 36,000 dollars.
There was some patching on 13th Street on the north side, too, I've noticed.
Yes, Brent in the water department's doing a lot of patching in his cuts, trying to catch up. But I know I had a big hole today on 7th Street, I'm gonna tell Jim about it, we need some mix in there. Should be, should be able to get hot mix now, because that company's in town, that CNR Davis, they're paving.
They're the ones that have the community crosses crossing paving.
Right, they were milling today, but, so if you've got potholes, or if you've got issues in your ward, that's the guy to see. I met with Commissioner Holmes, and we talked about Wendy Creek, and another huge amount of money, over 100,000 to fix those slides, four slides. So, yeah, I'm just throwing it out there that it takes a lot of money to maintain that creek. So, but they know they got them, but anyway, I guess if we can find the money, or Connie can find the money, we'll fix it. That's all I have, is anything, Connie, you have anything?
No, I don't.
Jeff?
No updates.
Okay, we're moving right along. We'll go, no old business, new business is Rivers Edge Animal Shelter. I think the lady's here. Just take your name, please, we know, but I forgot.
That's okay. My name's Molly Hagman, I'm with Rivers Edge Animal Shelter. Good evening, council. I'm here to report quarterly financials.
You'll have to speak up just a little.
Could you move down here a little closer, since there's no mic?
Oh, oh, this is, doesn't work.
Is there a mic?
There is a mic there.
Or just speak up, yeah, thank you.
Mike, those old guys can't hear.
Yeah, exactly.
I will, I will speak up. I want to give you a copy of this, and you'll have to take a look at it. So last year, we had taught, we had spoke that I would come and do a quarterly report for you all, and if any questions needed to be addressed, then we would do so. So we have started off, January was tough. We had a lot of vet expenses, unexpected, several emergent expenses, one of those topped out at $700. And it was for an animal that was not in the shelter. So it was for somebody that was here in Perry County, actually in Tell City, that needed help with an animal, and we addressed it. I budget for $1,500 a month in our vet expenses, and on January, we were almost at 3,600. We're still looking good, though, but that's how this business fluctuate, especially with the vet expenses, because I budget for 15, but sometimes we have emergencies, and we just have to, we have to take care of that, and that's where the fundraising comes in, and our donations definitely help in that as well. Also, our increase in contract with the city of Tell City and Perry County has helped tremendously. So, just want to say that I'm-
Molly, and all the income is reflected in that income statement?
Yes.
So that's everything, donations and-
Yes.
City and county support?
Correct. On the, on the back page of that, I don't know if you looked on the back page, Larry? I gave you a revenue report, because I know you like to see that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
That's okay.
Thank you.
So that's a breakout of donations, and then what, Perry County, and we've received from Tell City.
Okay, great, thank you.
And actually, that is, that, that revenue sheet is up to today, okay? The quarterly report is quarterly, but you can still see part of second quarter in there as well. I'm pretty proud of where we, where we, where we're at right now. Could we be better? Absolutely. But I look at where we were two years ago, we've come a long way. We are definitely getting our footprint out more into the community. People now know that we're here, and they are coming to us needing help. And that's what we want to do for our community. We don't want to just be the shelter that's in Cannleton, because we know that we have residents here in Perry County that struggle. They struggle financially, they struggle financially to feed their animals, let alone any vet care. Now, one could say, should they have an animal? That's, that's not for me to, that's not for me to judge. They have the animal, it, they need help, and if I don't help them, then that animal's gonna come into the, to an already full shelter. So my job also is to try to keep that animal, if it's not being abused or neglected, to keep that animal with its owner. And that's where some of our expenses are coming into play as well, because we're trying to make that footprint into the community. So does anybody have any questions about anything on the profit and loss, or the revenue?
Does Troy and Cannleton contribute?
Troy does not. And when this first, when this first started, they were going to contribute $1,000.
Okay.
Somehow, they got left out of the contract, and we were already, we were already in six months, we were from November to March, five months, in negotiation. I did not want to extend it any further for that, so I said, "We'll, we'll make up the difference." Cannleton is, yes. Cannleton, when the inter-local agreement broke with Tell City, evidently, it broke with Cannleton as well. I was not aware of that, that's how that inter-local works. So I'm in talks now with Cannleton to get all that situated again.
That's good news. Any questions, any other questions for Molly?
And I can take this and scan this in and email it to all the council members tomorrow, and then you will have it to review some more if you need to, so.
And then, right now, we have, so just a little, last week, we took in, we've got a serious cat problem in Tell City.
Oh, yes.
We do. I have 40 cats in the building right now. Forty cats. Just, just for reference, I have 27 cat kennels. Last week, I took in 14 kittens and two mamas from 13th Street. The lady had to move that day, and that's when they called me. We closed at 5:00, I got a call at a quarter till 5:00 to get these, or they were gonna be turned loose in Tell City. So that's what's happening. We've got, we, we have got to come up with a plan to stop this, because that was gonna be 14 kittens and two mamas that are not fixed, that was just gonna be left at 13th Street, at this house. And I can guarantee you, although, 75% of those kittens are female, and then you got two mamas. We've already got a big problem on 13th Street. I'm trying to get hot spots in Tell City where we have our problem areas, 13th is one of them. So, that added to the 40 cats in the building. We took in 14 and two mamas, and the mamas aren't nursing. So we are having to now supplement and bottle-feed these babies and try to keep them-
It's over by the fort, it's over by the high-rise, still up one of your-
Yes. Well, it, yes, it is, it's the alley where the laundromat is.
Right.
And there's a white trailer in that alley, and a lady feeds them. She puts bowls out. Well, the owner of that property, Ann Bill and Daves, and I've spoke with her, we've asked her to, to stop. Because here's the thing, if you feed them, if you feed them for four days, they're yours. And if you feed them, you need to fix them. That's, that's my saying, if you feed them, you gotta fix them. They're yours, you gotta care for them. Well, no, they're just strays. No, they're not. If you feed them, they are yours, because they become dependent on you to feed them. They're not gonna go away. She was told to take the bowls out of the, out of the trailer, and there for a while, there was no bowls there. Well, I just drove through there yesterday, and there's bowls back in the trailer. She sent me a message this morning, saying she found a cat. And I said, "Are you feeding it?" And she's never replied back. We've got to stop this, it, we've got to stop this mentality, because that's what's going on. They're, they're feeding, they're all gathering, they're mating, and a female can have four litters a year. A female can be nursing, and she can get pregnant while she's nursing. Those babies, that first set of babies that she had, by the end of the year, those babies will be having babies. That's how quick they can start having babies. That's why we have to do something. And what needs to be done, people don't want to hear it, and they don't like it.
What, what needs to be done?
We need, we need to go through, and we need to, because a lot of these cats are sick. If they're sick, we need to euthanize them. They're stray cats, they're sick. It's a lot of money to get a stray cat healthy, even if you can. So it's, it's best all around, even for health-wise, sanitary-wise, for the people, because cats will also spread diseases to humans. So it's a health risk.
Over here by our shop, Miss Heronimus, you familiar with that? I don't know if the city hired them, but they had somebody trapping, trapping them, which, I don't know, if he then euthanized them, or brought them to you, or, this is, you know, she's passed away several years ago.
Several years back, yeah. Our office was there, I had a lot of cat footprints on my cars.
Yeah, there's no-
And see, that's another thing, that people don't like that.
No, I didn't like it either.
Right, you don't want to get, get in your car, and as much as I love animals, I don't want them crawling all over my vehicle either, because it scratches the paint.
May I speak to this as well?
Sure.
That alley you were speaking of, on property, along that alley, I caught that individual, we're not naming right now. Very early in the morning, I was down at the hardware store, I saw her, I put up signs, she ignored the signs, and I made myself, I was on-
Do you own the white trailer?
No, I was across the alley from that.
Okay.
I caught her, and I said, "Are you the one she fessed up?" She said, "Yeah, I am." I said, "You see the signs?" She said, well, she, you know, didn't answer directly, and I said, "You're not feeding anymore," and she started feeding elsewhere. What, is there any kind of, I don't want to throw a lady in jail, but, I mean, is there any, I mean, it seems like she's, people like her are the source of the problem, is there any kind of, like-
She absolutely is.
Teeth, yeah.
I mean, yeah, teeth, and I'll stop there. I, I don't want to, you know, bother, that's, that, but I kind of explained to her what she's doing is not, I'm an animal lover, got cats, got dogs, I take care of them, and it is a problem for the neighborhood.
It is a problem.
And then, I, I don't-
Well, Bill and Daves, I mean-
Yeah. Is there any teeth to speak of?
Current, current ordinance is not really, not really.
Do I have the right to capture and see, and take care of any cats that are on my property?
Yes.
Stray animals and vermin, you can capture, and I don't want to know what you do with them. They're yours.
No, you can, yeah.
Well, I can't keep on doing it, even if I want to, because it's a, like you said, it's a genuine problem. So I'm sorry, I'm in-
No, 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 you're not interrupting at all. I think that, this is where we need to, I think we need to brainstorm and-
I think the only way that we ever put a dent in folks doing what we're talking about here is if there were an ordinance that established an escalating series of fines. We, we do have, and I will need to check our ordinance again, I believe we have, a pet permit ordinance. We had an escalating permit fee, like your first cat's $25, your second $25, your third is $300, something like that might cut down on people.
It may.
Particularly if the ordinance did indeed say that if you're feeding them, they're yours, because if somebody says, "Well, I'm just feeding a stray," well, every $300 permit stray that you're feeding, when you get an invoice for it, would put a stop on it.
And who's gonna enforce it?
That is the difficulty.
No one's gonna pay.
That is the difficulty we've got. We can't put our police force on it.
Well, see, that's where, and, and that's another missing piece of the puzzle that we have now. We didn't, we didn't need it when we didn't have a shelter. But now that we have, now that the shelter has been here, the missing piece now is animal control.
That is absolutely correct.
Or if we could add, add the, if they don't pay the fine, we could add it to water bill or-
That's tougher.
Yeah.
I don't know that you could add it to a bill, I think the only thing, the only recourse you would have there would be to file a lien.
Yeah, and I, I think your, I think your wiser path is always gonna go down code enforcement.
So I just want to, I just want to put this bug in, in your all's ear, that this isn't, this is an issue that's, that's gonna grow-
Oh, it has.
If we don't, if we don't do more. I, I'm seeing, I'm seeing improvement, but in areas, okay? But there's certain areas that I see that are getting worse again, so.
Molly, let me ask you, and I'll probably be blasted all over Facebook, but Sylvia, would you support a euthanasia program?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'm gonna be blasted, too. Here's the thing.
I, I was-
I think any comprehensive plan-
We have to make-
It's gotta be a comprehensive plan.
Right.
I was kind of optimistic, I, I think I read several months ago, when that clinic came through to fix cats, I think they fixed like 94 cats, or something like that.
Mm-hmm.
I thought, "Man, that's phenomenal work of progress."
It is, it is.
And then you tell me we've got a party more cats to deal with, so.
It, that is absolutely, could, could you imagine what it would be like if those 94 didn't get fixed?
Oh, I know, I know.
So it is, we are making strides, but we still have a lot more to, we, we still gotta keep dug in, and we still need to, to brainstorm and come up with, with ideas to take care of this problem. And, and yes, I am in agreeance that if these cats- And, and yes, I am in agreeance that if these cats are strays and they are unhealthy, they need to be euthanized, because they are spreading disease that's going to affect our community, our residents.
That way, if a, a private citizen trapped a cat on his property, he'd have a place to go, and the cat would be euthanized.
We don't euthanize at the shelter. I, I, I'm, I let my vet do that. And there's a couple of reasons.
What?
While the shelter, when the shelter was open last, it, it had a bad name, because they euthanized, and evidently they euthanized anything that walked in the door that they didn't like. That, that can't happen now. I have, under a vet's supervision and authorization and agreeance, that this animal needs to be euthanized. And that's just the way I want to keep it.
What, what does it cost to euthanize a cat?
To euthanize a cat, probably about $70 with my discount.
How about to spade them?
To spade them, it, it's higher for a female.
It's higher?
And it, it, yes, it costs more, because it's a surgery for a female. For a male, it's, it's a quick snip. For a male, my cost is sixty. Female, my cost is seventy-five. So, I get, and yes, that's, that's still expensive, because when, when you're doing the math, it's $70 times forty cats, that adds up really quick. But if you were to go around anywhere else, it's going to be a lot more expensive than that.
Would it be possible to get a, a contract with a, with a vet that he would get all of our, he would do all of our euthan, euthanizing, maybe get a discounted rate?
I could certainly talk to him. I get a discount right now, because I'm a shelter. He gives me a 20% discount.
Oh.
So, I get a good price, and I have a good working relationship with my vet. I use Roberg over in Hardensburg. None of the vets, when I opened here, could service me. And, and they took, because I went to, I wanted to keep it all local. But Labhart, he services the shelter in Hancock County. He has been servicing that shelter for years. I would never want to jeopardize that relationship. Shani, he's trying to retire. He doesn't want to take on a shelter. Now, if I call him in an emergent situation, they will absolutely help me out. They are very supportive. But they can, he can manage to service my shelter. Roberg, they have four vets on hand. If I call them, if I called them during, anytime during the day, business hours, and said, "I have this animal that needs to be seen," they'll say, "Bring it." And that's what I need as a, as a vet.
Does it take longer to do one than the other?
Takes longer to do a female, so...
No, I mean, I mean, uh...
Euthanasia?
Yeah, different, euthanasia, two, two different types, what am I talking about? Oh, spading and euthanizing.
I would say spain, and I could be wrong, I would say spain takes longer. Euthanasia, um...
Various minutes.
It doesn't take long, and it's not, it's not what everybody has in their head. It's very peaceful. They give them medicine and they, and they go to sleep.
But it's not, it's not the time the vet's, Ben's doing it, it's the chemicals, or how does he arrive at that without an invoice specifically saying?
Weight of dr, weight of animal and amount of drug. So, that's what you're charged for. That's how I'm charged on a euthanasia. So, if I take in a hundred and twenty-five pound dog, that's going to take more medication to euthanize that animal versus a ten-pound cat. So, that's going to be a less charge. So, that's how he charges me. But I can certainly get a range of cost for that, so we can, we can have that information.
That would be good.
Any other questions? Thanks for coming in.
Thanks for having me.
Thanks, Molly.
Thanks.
Have a good night, guys.
You too.
Our next item is a public hearing on building and zoning permit fees. You have that ordinance, Jeff.
I do have the ordinance. What you would need to do is suspend your meeting, and then we will have our public hearing, and then we will reconvene the meeting and address the proposed ordinance.
I need a motion to suspend a me, the meeting.
So moved.
Mike and Larry, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. So, the temporary meeting is out for now.
Yeah, the meeting suspended, and, and this is the time for a, a public hearing regarding a ordinance to amend our building zoning and permit fees. I can kind of take the lead on this, since Lionel, Larry, and Brian were at the Plan Commission meeting, where we had a discussion. And I apologize, my recollection is that we have not changed these fees. Larry or Brian, do you remember? I'm wanting to say it's been in excess of ten years, and certainly hasn't been done since I became city attorney in 2018.
Yeah, I've been on the council for six years now, and it has not been done since...
I think you're right, I think it was ten years.
Yeah, and I know it's, I know it's been a long time, and so, this process started with Steve Goodson and his group going through, taking a look, and sending proposals to me, which I then put in a form that we presented to the Plan Commission. Despite the fact that it has been such a long time, that the increases are, are not extreme, I did not go across the board and do the math to tell you what the percentages would be. I think the important thing, before we open this up to public comment, is, is to understand that these fees, in terms of the current citizens and residents of Tell City, have almost no impact. These fees come into play when you're going to make improvements, certain improvements on your property, or if you're going to build a house, what, what the permit fees may be. It does address signs, and some of those type of things. But if you are a current resident, sitting in your home, happy with what you've got, and plan to live there for the rest of your life, you will never pay one of these fees, whether it be the old fee or the, or the new fee. For anybody that would be concerned that all of a sudden this is going to cost them a bunch of money, it is not. It's simply updating our fees to modernize based upon the fact that we have not done that in such a long period of time. So, in terms of the public hearing, I think the appropriate thing right now would be, if anybody has any comments, they're welcome to do so. Based upon what I see here, I don't think that anybody is, is here to present any comments. So, if the coun, if the council wishes to discuss it further outside of the discussion regarding the ordinance, you're welcome to do it, or you can reconvene your meeting and take action on the ordinance, if you're inclined to do it.
Josh, do you have anything?
No. I don't like it.
Okay.
Whatever Jeff says, I'm going for it.
All right.
And I might add, if Jeff's, if Jeff mentioned it, I didn't hear it, but this does come as a recommendation from the Plan Commission.
The Plan Commission did make a favorable recommendation, where we had a, a, a meeting dedicated to this issue, and discussed all of the numbers, and the Plan, Plan Commission was unanimously in agreement.
Are we going to charge a Habitat?
Habitat does pay permit fees and, and whatever, whatever fees are appropriate, Habitat pays them.
You got a good point, maybe we should write that in.
Well, you want to double?
Go ahead.
I, I do have a question, I can hold it till our regular meeting, or I can ask it now.
Whatever, whatever.
Jeff, the, the section on temporary permits on the second page.
Yeah.
Aye. Does, does that take in what we've been talking about, like at the water board meeting, where they go out and turn a meter on, and then...
That's, no, that is a, that is a different...
That's a different thing?
That's another, that's another fee that is, I'd say that that issue is in progress right now. We haven't reached the point of public hearing. We may be doing that at one of our next meetings.
When would you have temporary improvement permits, or temporary occupancy, or temporary contractor's license?
I would, I wish that Steve, I, Steve asked me if he needed to be here, and I told him I thought I could handle this. That's a question that would be better directed to Steve. Temporary contractor's license, I, I do know the answer to that one. We require contractors to get a license if a contractor happens to be hired by a homeowner for one specific job, that brings him to Tell City for a week to work on a project. We don't expect him to get the, the full contractor's license, he can just get a temporary contractor's permit. Temporary certificate of occupancy, again, I'm, I'm going to guess that's if somebody's going to reside in a very short period of time in a building or structure, then they would, rather than get the certificate of occupancy that you get when you build a home or apartment building, which is permanent at that point, that this would just be for a limited period of time. I do not know. Temporary improvement location permit, I, I have no idea what that circumstance is. Can't imagine you're going to temporarily improve a property and then remove it, but maybe somebody would. Build a temporary porch.
If there's not any other questions, I'll entertain a motion to re, to call the meeting.
To close, yeah, to close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing, hearing and, and reconvene your meeting.
Yes.
So moved. Second.
Philip and Larry, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. So, we're back in session. We have an ordinance prepared by our city attorney, building and zoning permit fee ordinance. Do I have a motion to read it for the first time?
Motion.
Motion by Brian, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mike, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
What's my ordinance number, Con?
Twelve twenty-two.
Twelve twenty-two. Ordinance number twelve twenty-two, building fees, zoning fees, and certain real estate development fees. And I apologize in advance, I may paraphrase a bit, because this is four pages long. Whereas Tell City Plan Commission has met and is making recommendations to common counsel of the city of Tell City, Indiana, to amend ordinance number eight twenty-two and ordinance number ten forty-five concerning building fees, zoning fees, and certain real estate development fees. And whereas the common counsel of the city of Tell City, Indiana, has now determined that it is appropriate to amend the present fees charged by the city for certain building construction, certain zoning activities, and certain real estate development. Be it ordained by the common counsel of the city of Tell City, Indiana, as follows. Section one. Whenever an owner of real estate desires to construct or desires to build a new structure within the zoning jurisdiction, the city of Tell City, Indiana, that applicant or its agent must pay the following fees. For a single-family dwelling, $100 plus 15 cents per square foot of the building. Two-family dwelling, $200 plus 15 cents per square foot of the building. Multi-family dwelling, apartment building, condominiums, cooperative buildings, mobile homes, and parks, or any other type of multi-family housing, each building is $100 for the first unit, and $50 for each unit thereafter, plus 15 cents per square foot for each building. Industrial and commercial buildings, each separate building, 250 plus 15 cents per per square foot. Additions to each existing structures, $100 plus 15 cents per square foot for each foot of the new addition. Off-street parking, operated by any entity other than local government, state government, or federal government, $100 plus 250 per parking space. Additions to existing one- and two-family homes, $40 per room for up to three rooms. Over three rooms, it is $100 plus 15 cents per square foot of the total area of the new addition. Detached garages and carports, $50 for one, and two-car garage with an additional $15 charge for those detached garages and carports which have room for more than two cars. Applies only when garage or carport is not constructed at the same time as the principally permitted use. Accessory items, multipurpose structures such as yard, yard barns, $30. Swimming pools above ground, $25 plus 10 cents per square foot of the square footage covered by the swimming pool, including any aprons and/or decks, and/or patio areas surrounding and/or adjacent to the pool. Swimming pools in-ground, $50 plus 15 cents per square foot of the square footage covered by the swimming pool, including any aprons and/or decks, and a patio area surrounding and/or adjacent to the pool. The fees imposed under this numbered section only apply to swimming pools with a depth of more than two feet, and a diameter or width of more than 10 feet. All permitted accessory uses in all residential districts and mixed-use district, except composting, off-street parking of recreational vehicles, and off-street parking and loading, $10. All permitted accessory uses in commercial and industrial districts, $50. Curb cuts, $20. Demolition of building, principal buildings, 35, accessory buildings, 20. Duration of demolition permit is for six months from the date of issuance. Temporary permits, temporary improvement location, 75. Certificate of occupancy, 50. Contractor's license, 35. Moving or changing location of buildings, principal buildings, 75, accessory buildings, 30. Sign permits, $15 plus $20 per sign up to 32 square feet of sign. Signs over 32 square feet, $15 plus $30 plus $2 per square foot of sign which exceeds 32 square feet. Non-projecting signs, $15 per sign plus 24, or plus $20 per sign up to 32 square feet, or for non-projecting signs over 32 square feet, $15 plus $20 plus 150 per square foot of sign over 32 square feet. Remodeling, this applies to projects exceeding $4,000 in total costs, excluding installation of central heating, central air conditioning, major rewiring, and major plumbing. That's $100. Certificate of occupancy fees, one- and two-family dwellings, 50. Multi-family residential, 100. Commercial, industrial, 150. Conditional use, 100. Accessory use, $5. Electrical permits, residential, 40. Commercial, 100. Fences, residential, 30. Commercial, 500, 50, I'm sorry, 30 for residential, 50 for commercial. Section two, the following fees apply to those applicants who seek zoning amendments, zoning amendments, seek zoning amendments, zoning variances, conditional uses, repeated term there. Conditional uses and other approvals under the present zoning code is applicable to the city of Tell City as follows. Variances are 300. Zoning amendments, including change of master plan, zoning classifications, or change in zoning text, $150. Change of zoning map, $300. Change in development plan, which has been previously approved, $40. Filing fee for original development plan, $100. Conditional uses, $300. Appeals from administrator to Board of Zoning Appeals, $150. Grading permits as required under Article 23 of the existing zoning codes, the city of Tell City. Filing fee, $25, in the event that an applicant fails to pay the required $25 filing fee for a grading permit as required under the existing zoning code of the city of Tell City. Any enforcement, enforcement action to compel the applicant to pay such filing fee shall require a fine in a sum not less than 25 and not more than $1,000.
Two fifty.
Two hundred and fifty, thank you. Trying to go fast here.
I know.
Real estate, section three, real estate development, including provisional and record plats of real estate, require the following fees. Overall provisional plat, 150 plus $1 for each lot. Resubmitted overall plat, $100 plus $1 for each lot. Record plat, $100 for plat with 10 lots or less, $50 for plat, plus $5 per lot with more than 10 lots, and fewer than 50 lots, and $5 per lot for those record plats which have 50 lots or more. Section four, changes, or charges for copies of following shall be. Zoning map, full size, $14, reduced, $4. Zoning code text, paper, $14.46 for 96 pages, $10 plus cost of, of medium. Comprehensive plan, $10.30. Improvement location permits, temporary improvement location permits, certificate of occupancy, temporary certificate of occupancy, and grading permits, $1 per page. Documents relating to proceedings before the Board of Zoning Appeals, Plan Commission, and Technical Advisory Committee, $1 per page. Section five, penalties. If any applicant shall violate any provisions of this ordinance, such applicants shall be fined in any sum not less than $10 and no more than $1,000 for each act, and each day of such unlawful activity as is prohibited shall constitute a separate offense. The city of Tell City shall also be entitled to reimbursement of its reasonable attorney fees, costs, and legal expenses incurred in enforcing the provisions of this ordinance of any such applicant who has found to have violated the terms of this ordinance. Section six, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage by the council, approval by the mayor, and publication in accordance with Indiana law, passed and adopted by the common counsel of the city of Tell City, Indiana, this fifth day of May, 2025. Cinco de Mayo.
Okay, you've heard our first reading. Is there a motion to suspend the rules and have second and third reading by title only?
Motion.
Motion by Brian, second.
Second.
By Larry. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motions carried.
Okay, second reading, ordinance number twelve twenty-two, building fees, zoning fees, and certain real estate development fees. Third reading, ordinance number twelve twenty-two, building fees, zoning fees, and certain real estate development fees.
Is there any discussion on the ordinance before we vote?
I'd like to ask a question.
Okay.
On industrial and commercial buildings, have detached garages and carports? Is that like, I think the only one in Tell City that has buildings delivered and set up on people's ground. Does that include that type of a building or just those that a contractor or individual built?
I think anything that would meet the definition of a detached garage and carport would be subject to the.
Okay. And same thing in G1, yard barns.
Yes.
I think Nobie's and Dixon's both sell yard barns.
So folks that are placing those on their property should be applying for a permit to have them placed on there. I would encourage any council members that notice structures appearing that should be subject to a permit, notify Mr. Goodson and let his folks go out and talk to him. I suspect most people would be happy to pay it if they knew it.
A lot of people ask if there's an ordinance like that.
Yeah.
So now we can say yes.
Now we can say, yes, there is, yeah.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions?
In Tell City.
In Tell City, right.
Now, this pertains to the inside or is this our zoning?
This is Tell City.
Two-mile limit.
The, now, the zoning, that's interesting. Actually, I believe all of these would apply within the two-mile zoning jurisdiction. That this is within our zoning jurisdiction, yes.
I know an individual just had to get a permit for a yard barn in a two-mile.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, I mean, do we need to add that or do you think it's covered?
Yeah, it, um, God, without parsing through this again. Whenever an owner of real estate desires to construct or desires to build a new structure within the zoning jurisdiction of the city of Tell City, Indiana.
There we go.
Right in, right in section one, I read it and just was going through it so fast that it didn't register in my mind.
Any other questions or discussion?
One more. D3, off-street parking lots, is that like if I build a parking lot and charge people for?
Correct.
Thank you. Not private.
Yeah.
Not people that just built, put a parking lot on their.
That's, that's the way I would interpret that because when somebody constructs a new business, part of our zoning and planning requirements requires them to create a certain amount of parking. So they would be, that would be part of their development plan and their initial permit would include that.
Somebody that, a house that doesn't have a concrete, that wouldn't include them.
No, improvement to somebody's driveway would not.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? We've had reading, we've suspended the rules. So I need a motion to adopt.
I'll make that.
Mike makes the motion. Need a second. I'll second it. All those in favor of adoption read by our city attorney say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried.
That will be published in the paper and will take 30 days after the last date of publication.
And it's just one time in the paper, correct?
One time, yeah.
Our next item is ordinance amending the zoning map, Habitat of Humanity. I believe that's Josh.
This one's pretty easy.
I believe so. We acquire some properties down along Fourth Street, the, I guess they call it the 900 block, Fourth Street, and it's zone manufacturing. We own lots 7, 8, 9, 10, and 11 there. And we'd like to have that rezoned, I believe, R3. Is that what it says?
That's what's in the ordinance, yeah.
Yep. We intend to build, we own five lots there, but whoever's CenterPoints calling themselves today, whoever, they have a big power line that goes right over across one of them, and they have a large easement there. So where there's one lot, we will not be able to ever build on them as long as there's that easement there. And I just talked to Andy Hicks, and those, those power lines are supposed to be, there's no intention of moving those, which we understand. We understood when we acquired the property there. And we, so we hope to build over a course of time four single-family homes there on those, on those lots, lots, and get those back on the tax roll. So, any question for?
Is that in the 100-year flood zone?
It would be if there wasn't a flood wall. So we are required, because we're, everybody knows us as a builder, we're actually a large lender as well. So we lend to the homeowners to purchase the homes from us. And by law, we have to require, like any lender would do, have to require our homeowners to have flood insurance if they're in flood zones. Oh goodness, A and B, is that? The 100-year flood plain. And due to the fact that there's that flood wall there, that is not considered in the 100-year flood plains, we do not require our homeowners to have flood insurance. We always, we always inform our homeowners of that, you know, situation. Obviously, a large part of our community here is protected by the flood wall and the levee. So that's a good question.
Okay. Any other questions for Josh?
Did this come before the Plan Commission at the last meeting?
Uh, yes.
I missed the last meeting.
I did too.
Oh, okay. I was looking at you.
Yep, I was there.
I thought I read in the minutes.
I had the wrong date in my calendar, Larry.
Russ, great for getting calls.
Shame on you, Brian.
I know it, that it might be.
So I assume this is coming as a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission.
Correct, yeah. We had a, we had a great discussion.
I thought I watched the video where you made a.
Say, here's a copy of the minutes.
And I just want to add as well, in my former career, I built houses in several different areas in southern Indiana. Habitat's not going to balk one minute on these permit prices.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
This all.
Yeah, we appreciate the city, we appreciate Steve.
People have the misunderstanding that Habitat is low-income. They're not necessarily low-income. These folks buy these houses. They get mortgages. They do the same as you, me, and anybody else. This is not subsidized housing. And, and so as part of that process, there are permits, there are fees, that rolls right into it, and the consumer ultimately pays them, so.
Yeah, even if I was building houses on the regular, you know, Simon Harris has done them, again, these, these prices of these permits that you're, that you just pass away is more than fair.
Yeah. We're low compared to most communities.
Do you want to say something?
Oh, I just.
Oh, okay.
If you're not familiar, this will be south of our new substation.
Correct.
There's an alley that's going toward the flood wall.
If y'all remember where the, I call them the practice poles. Tell City Electric used to have their practice poles where they climb up.
Yes.
I don't know what they do. They practice climbing poles and stuff. We own, that's the lot farther to the south that we now own. Those poles are now gone. And we own all the way up to where the big, I don't know what you call it, the big power lines that go overhead there. We own, we own all the way up to there now.
Be from Schiller to Tale.
Tale Street.
We don't own all the way to Schiller because there are, I think, at least two homes between us and Schiller. But yeah, we own all the way to, if you, we did, Mr. Oost passed away several years ago. We bought his house, had good bones.
Oh, he bought his house?
It had good bones. We did an addition on it, and we partnered with Lacey Lethlin-Jones, and she bought that home from us, one of our partner, partner homeowners. And we've got all those other lots now, and just really excited to develop that area, so.
Any other discussion? We haven't voted yet, have we, Johnny?
No, and it's an ordinance, so.
So I need a motion.
Motion to read.
We've already suspended, so a motion to approve.
We'd need, we'd need a motion for the first reading on this one.
I make a motion for the first reading.
I thought we already did that.
No.
Oh, this was the other one. I'm totally confused. Senior moment.
Second.
All those in favor of reading the ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, Jeff?
And that number will be 1223.
Ordinance number 1223, ordinance amending the zoning maps and the text of the zoning